So at this point, the meeting is being recorded. And we'll get started in about 30 seconds. Again, if people can mute if you're not speaking, so we don't have any necessary background noises. So it's 6 o'clock. This is the reorganizational meeting of the board. So at this point, it's a transitional phase for board leadership. The offices of the board from the prior year will be transitioning based upon the election of the board tonight. So at this point, Mrs. Chase, who is a district clerk, will take the lead for the board meeting, call it to order, the Pledge of Allegiance, any announcements, and then asking for the adoption of the agenda. Mrs. Chase?
Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Chase, I'm going to share my screen so we can have the agenda up and ready.
I don't know if there's any announcements.
No, you keep going.
Okay. So could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
I'm sorry. Robert, Wesley, and Deanna Stevenson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. So first is the election and oath, or I'm sorry, oath of office of the newly elected board members. First up will be Naomi Hoffman. So repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that it will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of member of Board of Education.
Of member of Board of Education.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then also, Augusta Miller. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that it will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of member of the Board of Education.
Of member of the Board of Education.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next, we will take nominations for board officers.
I'd like to nominate Christina Regout as Vice President to the board.
Do we start with president?
Start with president, Naomi. Oh, we do start with president? Okay.
So I will, I'll nominate Deanna. This is Todd. I'll nominate Deanna. I think she's done an excellent job over the past two years as Vice President, working with Bob, and I think now is a great time. I think she's capable and ready to take on that role and learn that role as a president. So I'm nominating Deanna Stevenson.
I would like to second that nomination. I agree with everything Todd just said and think Deanna will be a fantastic leader for the board. She's approachable, she's strong, she's a doer, she will do a fantastic job. So way to go, Deanna.
Any discussions? Any other nominations?
Now call a, call a action, please.
I'm sorry.
Call a vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passes. Congratulations, Deanna.
Thank you, Kathy.
I'll swear you in now as Board President. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of President of Board of Education.
The duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education.
In the Shenandoah School District of Clifton Park.
In the Shenandoah School District in Clifton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay. So I think it's my turn now to take a nomination for Vice President.
I would like to nominate Christina Regout as the Vice President to the board.
Is there a second?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Naomi. Go ahead.
No, it's okay. We can get a second and then I can comment.
Go ahead. Naomi, do your comment, then we'll get the second.
Oh, I feel honored to be in this position to honor, to recognize Christina and to ask for the rest of the board to do the same. I believe that she, she has, she has demonstrated her passion for education, especially those students with social and emotional needs. She has always been there for them. She's a voice, she's an advocate for our students. I think that she will be an exceptional Vice President and will support Deanna, Deanna and her role as President. And I hope the rest of the board agrees and supports that decision.
Thank you, Naomi. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. All approve?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Congratulations, Christina.
Thank you to all of you.
Congratulations to you both.
I'll administer the oath. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully discharge. I'm sorry. And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Vice President of Board of Education.
The duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
In the Shenandoah Central School District in Clifton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, Kathy.
So Dr. Robinson, I think you had reiterated that the Code of Ethics forms will be sent to each board member, correct?
So the oath will be sent to each board member to be signed, as well as the Code of Ethics, once we get to that point, as well as the oath that Mrs. Swettmore issued to me right now as well.
Okay. Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position of Superintendent of Schools.
The position of the Superintendent of Schools.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
In the Shenandoah Central School District at Clifton Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Robinson.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
All right. Dr. Robinson, I'm going to head into the Board of Education comments and reports, if that's okay with you.
Just can you, if you don't mind, Mrs. Stevenson, I pulled the oath up on the agenda just so the public is aware of the Code of Ethics that the board members sign. See that document currently?
Yes, we do.
And at the bottom of it was signature spaces for all board members to sign, and we'll try to either board, Mrs. Ford will coordinate to either have board members stop by and sign it, and/or for those who are incapable of doing so or unable to do so, we send it out so we have all signatures on one document.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we're going to move into the part of the agenda for Board of Education comments and reports. And I know that, well, we haven't been attending any activities on the school or any partnerships or anything like that. Obviously, school is over, but any activities. But I will give the board a chance for any comments that they do want to give at this point, so I'm going to try to remember the order, seeing that we just shifted. So Augusta, do you have any comments for tonight?
I don't, actually, not right now.
Okay. Naomi?
Yes, I'd like to restate, I know the vote was a few weeks back, but being that tonight is the swearing in, I wanted to restate how grateful I am and humbled to have, to start a second term on the school board. My resolve and passion for public education continues, and my bond with the district and community strengthened. I've always felt and continue to have, and hope to continue to have a strong connection with this community. I'm looking forward to continuing to serve. And to your point, Deanna, that we have, we're continuing to have committee meetings for specific ones, but one in particular that I'd like to recognize right now is the Diversity Committee. We last met on June 10th, spent quite a bit of time brainstorming, planning for what's next, both moving the committee forward, but also specific, but inclusive of the community as well. And we will continue to revisit policies such as the Code of Ethics and address possible disproportionate impact that that has on minority students. Just so everyone knows, the committee consists of board members, district leadership, administrators, and teachers. I believe there may have been a student teacher on the committee this last year. Dr. Robinson, correct me if I'm wrong. They, it's an energized group. It's, it's, they are eager to continue our work, and our next meeting is on, I believe it's on July the 23rd. So I definitely wanted to share what's happening with that group. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Todd, do you have any comments for tonight?
No, just congratulations, Naomi and Augusta. Thank you to the public for the vote of yes on all of our budget items, and congratulations to you, Deanna, and to Christina, and taking us into the unknown. So good luck.
Thank you, Todd. Okay. Bob, do you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, I have some comments. I would like to congratulate Naomi and Augusta for returning for second terms on the board. And I'd also like to thank the board as an institution for continuing signing ethics every year by our board, by all board members. I think this is extremely important that we maintain this, this approach. And also congratulate Deanna and Christina. This is clear message that we want to ensure continuity within our board. We have quite a few experienced members, and we have the ability this year to have stability with all board members returning. This looks like to be a different year in that I think financially we were on a sound footing as much as possible, and I think around us, national and state leaders have probably the better idea of what's coming at them. We didn't see that February and March. It was more of a crisis mindset. I think now it's more of a deliberate approach as we address several unknowns. The key thing I've seen over the last couple of weeks is the need to continue as an organization to ensure we talk about and confront and address racism within the community. We've mentioned this before, but I think this is something that's not going to go away and needs to be brought up as something important to members as a means to end what we have in society and what our role as an educational institution to address it. Overall, I think this district has done some, quite a few things that set the example in terms of hiring practices, ending bias as much as we possibly can within our hiring of folks, ensuring that we can apply more social justice to our students in every way possible, and also improving the educational experience for our students. So I think we do a very good job at managing this, but there's always work that needs to be done. I think within society, right now, in the news, there are a lot of symbols that are changing that were long overdue to change, whether it be names of sports teams, how certain monuments became ingrained in certain municipalities as something that had to be there, not necessarily that everybody wanted it there, but I think there's a need to address this, and that's coming through with symbols that are very important, changing. However, in the past, such things had occurred, and there was often a backlash because other things that are needed to ensure that we continue to prevent racism still need to be brought forward within society. I think some of the things we've started, and I mentioned them, are things that we need to be doing better and more and communicating to others that we can, that's the approach that everybody needs to take. So I think that's my first conversation here. I do want to continue this, and I do want to bring it forward at appropriate times later on throughout the year. Thank you for your time.
Great, Bob. Thank you for your thoughts. Certainly will. Gary, do you have any comments for tonight?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Congratulations to all, where congratulations is appropriate. I'd like to thank Bob for his outstanding service. I don't know the number of presidents that I've served under, including, well, I wasn't serving under myself, but I did serve. Almost all of them were good, very good or outstanding, and I would put Bob up there in the outstanding group. I thank him for his service, great leadership. Relative to following Bob's comment in terms of our efforts, it's quite clear that it isn't, that implicit racism has far from gone away in our society. I had, I had deluded myself, thinking that it was just the hit, the things that people felt that they didn't even know they felt, but there's a tremendous amount of overt implicit racism, and I can only say that I believe it's based on ignorance. And so since we are an educational institution, it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we address that ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Christina, do you have comments?
Yes, thanks, Deanna. Well, first of all, as Gary said, I want to thank Bob for his, you know, outstanding leadership. He has certainly elevated certain topics, certain issues that really focused our attention as a board and as a educational entity to ensure, again, that we always have our students' best interest as our ultimate goal. So Bob, thank you for that. I also thank you for being a great mentor in readying Deanna to take on the president position. She's certainly ready, so I appreciate all the mentoring that you had provided when she was Vice President, because again, it just shows what strength you had to also cultivate another strong leader to follow. But I want to thank all of you, you know, fellow board members for your support and for nominating me as Vice President. I'm honored to serve alongside of Deanna in this leadership role and look forward to continuing to working with all of you. And I know that each of you bring passion, steadfast commitment, and unique perspectives to this board table, and I value that, and I think we're very fortunate to have, you know, such great perspectives. I've been actively involved in, in the Shen District for 15 years in various capacities, including the past five years, serving on the board, entering my sixth year now in the leadership role, so I'm very excited and honored for that. Deanna and I have had the pleasure of actually serving together in leadership roles in different capacities within the district, and I think Deanna and I both share similar values, similar visions, and balance each other well. Nonetheless, I think we also, and you can all attest this, we have very distinct personalities and approaches, which I believe will definitely serve the district well. And I'm really ready to work together to navigate, as we're calling this a new era, created by not only the pandemic, but the elevated awareness of the implicit racism and advocacy for social justice and equity, as my colleagues have spoken to at this point as well. So I look forward as a board, helping our district and community to redefine and reshape, actually, education, to respond to the challenges that are set before us, and to also create opportunities for, to meet the complex needs of all of our students academically, socially, emotionally. And it is my hope that what we do accomplish as a board, as a district at Shen, will not only be embraced by our community, but will be a model for many other school districts, and will also be ingrained and woven into the fabric of not only our Shen community, but all communities throughout this country. So thank you, and again, I am honored and looking forward to another great year and serving beside all of you, and working with the administrators, students, families, and our community to make Shen continue to be strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina, for those kind words, and thank you for your commitment to this, to our district. I'll final, I'll do the final comments. I want to thank, first of all, congratulate Augusta and Naomi once again on their, on their wins through the historic budget vote. And I'd also like to congratulate Christina. I look forward to working with her, and yes, we have, we have crossed paths many times in my, 2008, so we're looking at 12 years for me in this district. Bob, I want to personally thank you for the last two years. It's been an honor to serve with you, and yes, I did learn, I did listen, even when we had our quick meetings and I had to bolt in a, in a half an hour because I had to get to another meeting. But our, but our conversations were always clear, they were informative, they were, they were very, and sometimes very introspective, but as Dr. Robinson had stated too, and that in this word does stick out in my head, very objective. You had that, you had that way about you that you can clearly see a path, and no matter what, you stick to that path, and that's one of the things I most admire about you. So I, I'm very happy to continue to work with these six of my very special colleagues around this board table. We each bring, I say it all the time, I say it every year, we each bring something different to the board table, and I, I know, and I do certainly believe we will do great things in the coming year. Yes, it will be an odd year. Yes, you know, something's always been around though, right? There's, ever since 2008, even before that, there have been things that, that cast a shadow, but I know that this district will overcome. I'm doing a little bit of retrospective thinking right now. We just graduate, 749 graduates just, just walked the stage, and they did walk a stage, a very beautiful stage on a very beautiful day. We did great things. The district did great things. Dr. Robinson, under your leadership, we will continue to do great things, and your district leadership team. I look forward to working with them. I look forward to this board, knowing now that we have, like Bob said, we have continued leadership, we have leadership ingrained in this board. I think it is important in our, when we meet again in our retreats, we start to talk about succession planning. I know that the coming months, we may not be going to a convention this year. I think it will be very important to continue our education. I very much want to do that, even if they are virtual, we can all, we can all gain knowledge from doing that and continue our growth on this board. So I look forward to the next year and the opportunities. I don't look at them as a challenge. Yes, we will have, there is a shadow behind us, but you know what? We're in front of it, and we will stay in front of it as a district, as a community, and I look forward to doing so. So thank you again. Okay. Having said that, Dr. Robinson, I'm going to move on to public comments. I'm going to read the passage that we read, and then I'll see, I don't know if we have students that are able to report today, but I'll read this first. "This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. Because this meeting is being held remotely, if you are a district resident, please send questions, comments via boe@shenschools.org. All questions, comments come into the Office of the Public Information Officer and are shared with the Board of Education President and the Superintendent of Schools. The Board will not address specific questions, comments, but ask for your name and address in the event follow-up is necessary. Policy questions, concerns are typically, are typically addressed by the Board President. Operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by the Superintendent and/or designee." I don't know, I don't see any, anybody emailing anything at this point. I will scan. I don't know if we have students on.
No questions at this point, and we typically don't have students in the summertime.
Oh, well, there you go. Then we don't have to worry about it. Well, thank you. So now, Dr. Robinson, I'm going to turn it over to you for superintendent's report.
Thanks very much, Mrs. Stevenson. So one of the, as alluded to by some of the comments, well, let me back up. First of all, thank you very much again for the last time we met, the approval of the respective benefit booklets for administrative leadership team and myself. Certainly, almost all of those individuals on the line now, they were on the call last week, on the call now as well. Certainly, the work of many folks, particularly this year, is, is a lot of heavy lifting, recognizing that not only we dealing with the traditional models, but we also dealing with various alternatives at the same time. Prime example of this, and the high school example, the high school is still running traditional schedules, and the reason why they have to run traditional schedules is because we need to know what courses kids need, what courses kids request, and so that we need to have that baseline in order to make any determination of any changes. So I use it for an example of a parallel structure is taking place all at the same time. The big conversation right now is clearly surrounding reopening of schools. The governor in a statement in the past couple of days, it was almost a passing statement to some degree, saying that right now, from his perspective, there isn't a decision on reopening of schools. Clearly, that created a lot of dust and a lot of consternation by many in terms of what does that actually mean? On the other side of the coin, the Board of Regents is meeting, my understanding, next Monday and Tuesday. One of the major items on their agenda is to review and hopefully approve guidelines for schools related to reopening. So we're all looking forward to having that document, at least access to that document by middle of next week, which all along, everyone has been anticipating that by mid-July we should hear something. There's also some confusion surrounding, again, a statement from the governor that schools were directed to submit plans by July 15th. Unless I live on the rock, I have yet to see, one, that directive, two, we have no idea what a plan would look like, three, there's no mechanism to submit a plan. That has also created some confusion with people in terms of where's, where's your plan, so to speak. So I share all that with the board because I think that's also part of the challenge we have, is that there are so many multiple assumptions and information sources that the public, to a large degree, latch on to things and make the assumption that that thing is the thing. It's still different than what we went through with many people having their versions of graduation ceremonies, and we ultimately stuck to what our plans were, and that turned out to be historically probably one of the better, more celebrated graduations in recent times. So I say that with the same backdrop, it's the same type of vigor, the same type of due diligence, the same type of fidelity that we are approaching the reopening of schools plan. I'm going to share with you very briefly, not for board questions at this point, not to be disrespectful when I say that, but just briefly so the board can have some sense of when we're talking about plans, these are very comprehensive, very detailed, a lot of people are looking at a lot of nuances of how things can work as we move forward, and trying to, to synthesize all that, as I said to a group earlier. we're basically trying to take the ocean and put it into a teacup without having any of it spill over the side. And, and so, so essentially, that's what we're doing right now because that teacup has to be something to John Q. Public, parents, our students, something that's, that makes sense, that's logical, that makes sense. The four-facing version has to be that, recognizing that there are tons and tons of details in the background. So I'm going to just share you very briefly, in fact, this is the first time this has been even shared publicly, and has only been shared probably by, with five or six administrators because we have an ad hoc committee that's looking at reopen, that they represent a wide variety of administrative folks at this time, and I'll be sharing this document with them at our next meeting next week, so, so give you some perspective of why, again, but just to give the board a flavor of some of the things that we're looking at. So, in this document you'll see here, when, I'm hopefully, I'm going to add, Mrs. Stevenson, can you acknowledge that you can see this document, please?
I can see it, Dr. Robinson.
So, so just to give the board, and some of this is going to sound very familiar to the board, and it should, because the same themes that drove our budget process is the same theme that drive our reopening process. Later on in this agenda here, we talk about our goals. Our goals are the goals that's going to drive our reopening process. We can't have one set of structures that's doing one thing, and another set of structures is doing another thing. Everything has to be in sync as we move forward. So as you see on here, the goals and essential objectives is the first section, if you will. What we have said all along in terms of equity and opportunities and outcomes and prioritizing needs has to be at the front and center of any reopening plan that we have. We have to make sure that we engage in the students who are most disengaged, we have to prioritize those students and their needs. We have to prioritize students' academic needs. We have to prioritize the learning gaps, and we've been doing a lot of research pertaining to learning gaps. We have to take a very authentic approach to this versus what I call academic approach. Academic approach is basically saying the checkbox, we did this, we did this, we did this, versus authentic approaches, where we really take a step back and look, look at, how do we prioritize our curriculum? How do we have more value, high-value lessons and activities? Again, all of this is grounded in a lot of research. How do we look at grading for learning and look at what we did over the past three months and take that to the next step? How do we look at our capacity, our virtual learning capacity, recognizing that, that regardless of the format, we always have to be prepared to pivot as we learned the past three months? Looking at scenario analysis, we hope that the guidelines, the guardrails we get tomorrow from the State Education Department, and whatever we may get from the governor's office will provide us the flexibility to do those things I mentioned before. We're looking at protocols. This week, we'll be issuing protocols, return-to-work protocols, recognizing now more and more, we have more people coming back to work, and we have the, the summer program, the extended-year program for, for certain special education students that started yesterday. So all those protocols have to be in place and are in place right now. That's everything from health screening to, to, to PPE provisions, to staff, to training, all those type things. We're looking at spatial relations, and I'm just going to give you an example again, Mrs. Stevenson, hopefully you can see this picture?
I can.
And just give you an example of, this is a classroom where we're looking at spatial relations within classrooms with social distancing separation. This is an elementary classroom. This classroom right now is equipped with 18 desks within it, so we're going all scenarios. We're looking at scenarios from a low of 12 to, in some cases, in, in high school, based upon the, the configuration of the classroom and things in the classroom, to even a half 20. So again, I share that with the board in a sense that when we look at options, we're not limiting ourselves to only certain options. We're looking across the board at everything from 12 to 18 to 22 because we want to understand capacity, and a lot of that will be dictated by whatever guidance we get from, again, the state in terms of, the, the American Pediatric Association came out with a thing that talks about three, three feet. Some people say six feet perimeters, some say six feet from head to head. So again, once we get some clarification on guidelines, that will give us some sense of what our capacity are, but we're working from, what's the worst-case capacity, what can we do? And anything beyond that becomes bonus. Provision of PPE is a big piece of it, making sure we have enough. For instance, the, the Shen mask that board members were given for graduation and our graduates will cross the stage. We're planning to have one of those for every employee in the school district. They're washable, they're, they last a long time if people take care of them. People certainly have their own, but we certainly want to make sure that every employee at least gets one of those from us. Transportation capacity is a huge piece we're looking at right now as well. Disinfecting buildings, continuing the piece. Looking at alternative models, delivery models that's different from elementary to middle to high school, where elementary, we largely focus on trying to have all, all kids onsite. What does that look like in terms of the, the capacity, the staff, and the learning experience? Middle school model, if we have to have some kind of hybrid, do we go sixth grade all onsite? Do we go alternate day for seven, it's supposed to be seven through eight, or seven, seven through nine? And so, so all those things are, are examples of, of different models. We're looking at pros and cons on all those kind of things. High school, if we have to go with an alternative hybrid model with some alternative block schedule-type situation. All these things, while they're summary statements, tons and tons and tons of detail behind all these respective bullet points you see here. Fiscal capacity, what does the state budget look like in a month from now, two months from now, three months from now? And how does it impact all the things that we just articulated above, or we'll be looking at above? Unforeseen opening costs, cost-related opening. What's, what the new guidelines, the new guidelines from the state, what mandates will those drive cost expenditures that right now we can anticipate? Those are some of the things we're looking at. And with all, within all of that, this is not my best thinking or any one of our staff best thinking. One, it's a collection of everyone's best thinking, but it's also a collection of best thinking across the country. As I mentioned before, the American Academy of Pediatrics has came out a report recently. CDC has now put out two different guidelines. The American Association of School Administrators, ASA, my superintendent's organization on the National Committee, we just put out guidelines. Capital Region BOCES, we work in regional to create a regional plan. These are some of the more, I would say, more comprehensive plans from across the country, Maryland, California, Missouri, Georgia, Pennsylvania, and, and I should have actually put Massachusetts and Connecticut in this link, they have plans. We also even looking globally. This global partnership is, is a collection of plans from across the globe, looking at countries that have already focused, have already been reopened and learning the best, what, what mistakes they made, what things worked great for them. So I share that with the board because, you know, there's a lot of, I, I'm going to call it chatter by, by news media, I gave a perfect example. My understanding, one of the news outlets supposed to be running the program today, talking about what different schools are doing reopening. There's a lot of statements being made. The reality of it is, we all have to plan for the best of our capacity and, and with the best interests of our students in mind. And, and yes, the guidelines would dictate how effectively we can do those things, and whatever flexibility the guidelines provide, we'll be looking to maximize that flexibility. My objective as superintendent is to put, is to put students in the best position to be successful. And, 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 and that also mean put students in a position that they're safe and being academically successful. And I think we can effectively do that as we move forward. So I share that with the board because I know that people wondering what we're doing. There isn't any one definitive thing right now, we can say we do it because we can't say right now, one definitive thing we're doing. We know that there are some things that are more feasible than other things, and we're looking at those things that are more feasible first in terms of prioritization of our time and effort and focus. So I'll pause there in case there are any specific questions that may have as a board that I could try to address.
Dr. Robinson?
Yes.
Out of BOCES, they published a reopening plan, and I guess it came from some other places as well. They talked about having the kids in elementary grades back in school full-time is an absolute priority. Would that, would that be our first priority as well?
So, so the, the short answer to the question, yes, that is a priority, and so the board is aware. I'm a part of the BOCES reopening committee. Dr. Wood is very instrumental on the, the academic side of creating plans for the academic instructional piece, particularly looking at the K-5 lens as well. So, so, so we're fortunate that here at Shen, we have a lot of folks that's influencing the conversation. We're also grateful that we're in this region. We have some of the best school districts in the state of New York, and it's not a, it's not a bragging statement, it's a factual statement. And as a result, we have some, some of the better thinkers across the state, and we have been regionalizing our efforts. So, so a lot of what we're doing here at Shen influences the regional plan, what if, a lot of what the regional plan influenced the Shen plan. And it's important for us to have more commonalities than not, and to give you a perfect example. If we are focused on Shen of bringing elementary kids back, for example, and one of our partner districts to the north is not, and all of a sudden, those parents who are teachers are unable to come to work, our plan goes to hell, do we cry frank with you? And so that's why the regional conversations become important for even nuances like that. So, so we can have the best plan on paper, but the question is, what's the best plan that can be executed with, with, with reliability from day to day, week to week, month to month?
Dr. Robinson, I, I, this, this is, it's, it's good to get this update, to see what's being done. It's actually very exciting to, to hear the, the pros and cons and looking at the, the different scenarios. I just had a question about the stakeholders. Are all the, what stakeholders are part of this group that are coming up with this plan?
Right now, this, 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 and I'm not going to be disrespectful by saying it's not a popularity plan, it's a practical plan, and it's a plan that we have to, I can't ask parents to come and tell me about the capacity of schools. We have to assess the capacity of schools. I can't ask parents to come to tell me about what's the curricular provisions. We have to know what the guidelines are and how we probably prioritize and, and curriculum and, and high-value things. I say that very respectfully because I know a lot of my colleagues have these great stakeholder things where people have what I call circular conversations, and they're very much that. It's like ideas being shared. The reality of it is, once we get the guidelines and we have some sense of what's feasible and what's practical, then we'll start to engage folks into the conversation about how do we fine-tune those things as well. Give you a perfect example, in the process now of setting up, meaning with teacher union representative, and the next group after that would be CSEA representative, to bring them to the table some point next week after we have some clear direction of what can be what, and then how does that play out, be contractual or otherwise? What are some of the nuances that we need to make sure that we're thinking about? Everything from training nuances to, to even the whole notion of, of how classrooms are set up. People walk into a classroom and seeing that now every desk is going to be a certain configuration. Psychologically, for some people, might be tough just to deal with that configuration difference versus people who may have had their classrooms in circles, and now you can't put your classrooms in circles because of those configurations. Or elementary teachers who have typically had little reading nooks where five or six boys and girls sit around close to each other on their little ABC squares. Now you can't have ABC squares in classroom. So, so having those, having folks into those conversations become important, important because that's when we start going into the fine-tune of execution of the plan so we can then execute the plan with fidelity. So, so admittedly, I, I must admit, my approach is, is different than many people's approach because my piece is, I don't want to frustrate, one, people with processes that end up in circular conversation versus engaging people when there's a value add to the equation as we move forward. And again, I could just point the most recent thing of graduation. I probably have 50 emails from, from people telling me all different opinions who want to be a part of the process. But the reality of it is, I had to have staff go and count individual parking spaces to make sure that everything that we do can happen, or have bus drivers and phys ed teachers come in and drive in their cars so we could time the sequence of how the whole thing will unfold so on graduation day, it happens seamlessly. And it's still different, so, so that's what we're planning to do, and, and how do we supplement all that? We supplement all that with expert research. And so, so example, the American Pediatric Association, for example, they came out with their papers because you had every person who, who has some affiliation with any health thing send their individual pieces, but their individual perspective were often biased by their own personal situations. And so I, we want to try to get as much unbiased, objective information as we possibly can to drive our decision-making because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, whatever we do, we have to be prepared to do it and sustain it over a period of time. We can't have a situation where, where one day from, from day to day, week to week is significantly different for kids. And we also have to have all those contingencies built in place in the sense that if something happened, how do we pivot quick enough to, to transition from onsite to virtual? And those are very, those are huge practical pieces, and so engaging stakeholders is something that we will do. And it'll be more so of engaging stakeholders from the standpoint of, of, of what do we need to do to prepare people, even psychologically, to be in that space? That's going to be probably the bigger engagement of stakeholders more so than the things that we're doing at this point. I hope that kind of answers your, your question, Mrs. Hoffman.
It does, thank you.
Any, any other thoughts? Mrs. Stevenson, want me to continue?
Please continue.
So, so related to that is, is what we're focused on now, and I shared, again, all these processes we're in the beginning of, and let me just open this one file, it's just taking a little bit here. Even our goals development process, this coming Thursday, we have what we call our Leadership Academy meeting, where it's basically all our administrators, and, and one of the things that we are focused on is, is looking at our goals, and I shared this document before the board. The board has seen this, everything that we do in the district hinges on the mission of the organization, and we don't lose sight of our North Star, especially now, especially now with so many uncertainties. We have to hold on to, to what has, what is tried and true, and what has been good for our school district, and, and the mission of the organization is the mission of the organization. It was the mission yesterday, it's the mission today, and the mission tomorrow. So we have to, to be consistent with trying to ensure that we are holding that mission. The board has seen these questions, same question that drove our budget process, again. And so, so kind of give you some sense of that, and, and this, this triangle, as you see here on the screen, the mission grounds what we do, right? And then we go from that saying that if this is the mission of our goals, what are those essential objectives that we change every year to, to target the, the salient needs or the priority needs of the district at, at this time? And you'll see those in a second. And then we say, and then we go from this, say, then what are the leadership outcomes? What are the outcomes that we want as a result of executing these objectives with fidelity? And how does all play out when we are all working together as individuals, but working together in, in unison, in the, this synchronicity of our efforts that drive what we want? And ultimately, it's equating outcomes for all the students that we serve. So with that being said, the goal statements that the board adopted last year and what we are proposing, cry frank with you, probably will be proposed at the end of the summers, very similar goal statements, haven't necessarily changed. What will change, and we'll be reviewing these with great details with our administrative team over the course of this coming, on the 16th, next Thursday, is these essential objectives. Again, I won't read through every one of them, but just give you the flavor. The one of the objective, we're talking about school structure and instructional delivery. This all talks about how are we going to look at, at reopening of school, and we have to look at reopening of school differently. Some of the things I just mentioned to you before, looking at school schedules and the student experience. So, so when we look into alternative schedule, it's not about the academic piece of how many people we can fit in only, but what does the experience look like, feel like for our students? So, so those are the, the big pieces of it. The measures of student learning, how are we really going to ensure that, that what we're focused on is encouraging learning and self-efficacy in our students? So, 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 so those are the objectives, and subsequently then, these are the what? So the question is, how do we do those, and that's where our individual leadership actions? And when I say leadership, it's not necessarily administrators, it's everyone within the organization then, take those, and then how do you, how the, how do the respective actions of our employees drive towards these objectives and subsequently goals? So that's on the instructional side. Organizational culture is a huge part of our organization. Almost everything that we do is influenced or impacted by the culture of the organization, and, and, and conversely, those things help define and redefine the culture of the organization. So, so we're looking at social, emotional learning is a big part of it. And we have seen it now that, that people have gone through this, this, what I call the virtual period and, and the whole issue with COVID-19 and the psychological pieces that surround those kind of things. How do we make sure that, that students are in fact coming back to school psychologically available to learn? And staff psychologically available to execute their craft to their fullest potential? Anti-biasing, anti-racism, the things that both Mr. Presley and, and, and Mr. Delalo alluded to in some of their comments. How do we making sure that, that, that we're preserving the equity and fostering diversity, the things that, that we've been talking about, and making sure people are prepared to, to, to have those contemporary conversations? And, and what are we doing as a system to, to make sure that we're making the adjustments accordingly? Health and safety continue to be a major focus for us on the, on the person- Um, on the, on the personnel and professionalism side, big part of it is, what's the professional, what's the professional development? What are the things we're going to prioritize to, again, to make sure that we're lending towards a seamless, not only reopening, but a seamless progression of, of providing education throughout the course of the coming years? So professional development becomes a big part of that, particularly when it comes to instructional delivery. Looking at diverse and inclusive hiring is something that we've been focused on for a number of years. How do we ensure that we continue in that piece of it, um, particularly again, as we look at reopening? Um, progressive learning communities, how we, how do we create those environments where people are coming together, be it leadership, professional learning team, support staff, where we're maximizing all the talents and expertise of the school district, recognizing that we will, we will very well ask people to take on different woes than they may have traditionally taken on in the past? So how do we make sure that we have that type of community, we have a community of learners and people willing to make the adjustments? The last goal is our fiscal responsibility piece, asking the question is, what does that mean when we talk about school reopening? What's the capacity, everything from space to, to staffing, to costs, all those implications that we have to take in consideration, some known, some unknown, some yet to be defined? And so how do we take all those things into consideration as much as possible and, and, and being limber enough to make the adjustments as we move along? The equitable resources, how do we ensure that, that as we look at reopening, that we're really truly being equitable in terms of the distribution of resources to meet the various needs of our, of our students, various needs of different schools, different programs? And so again, it's, it's not a situation where it becomes a popularity contest, but it's certainly one of those things that we analyze and the pros and cons of, is this the best investment to make to move the needle of progress forward? And the last piece of that, and the board went through the strategic budgeting piece, recognizing there's still significant unknowns, particularly at the state level, and so how do we continue to make sure that we're prepared? A conversation just having Mrs. Chase today, and she's preparing to send out a correspondence to, to all our administrative team to basically say to folks, guess what? Just because we have a past budget doesn't mean you go on a, on a, on a spending frenzy. We have to look at things now in a two-month, um, slot because we have to really prioritize, what are we doing for the next two months? What are we going to do for the next two months for that? Because at any given time, there are unknown factors at play that we have to be able to make those adjustments, and we can't have a situation to say, if we would have done something in the past, we would have been better prepared now. We'd take another tack. Because we want to be prepared in the future, we're going to make sure the things that we're doing now are very thoughtful as we go through the process. So, so when we look at the goals process, the goals process not only tells the story of the school district, but it also tells then the leadership focus and actions that will be taken to ensure that that story is not only told, but that story is, is, is responsible and that story is, is responsive, that story is, is relevant to the times that we're in and the needs of our students. So, so that's what the goals process is, and we'll be engaged in a lot of that conversation with our entire leadership, every administrator, every supervisor, next Thursday, um, and, and so it's going to be an exciting time for us to, to dig deep into our thinking, to our best thinking, to come out with processes that would drive our best actions. Again, I pause there in case there are any questions you may have as a board.
I just have one comment, Dr. Robinson, you know, we've, we've seen this year over a year, um, and it always, uh, it astounds me, especially this year, you know, this could be multiple pages, and you took it, and I'm not saying you simplified it all, but you hit, these are, these are exclamation points right here, and fits once again into the fabric of, uh, of our commitment to the education of our students. Um, and the way that it, we've had to pivot, you know, you call that agile, you probably want to talk about agility, um, this is, this was a total pivot and a 180 on something that I'm, I'm certain, um, wasn't easy to, wasn't easy to develop, so, uh, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. Any other thoughts, questions? Again, more will come with this, um, um, as we go through the process, but I, I thought again, it's, it's, it's important for, for the board, particularly this year being such a different, um, sequencing of things, to, to understand where we are, where we're going, and, 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 and the larger role in it. And sometimes I know as board members, there's a, there could even be a feeling of awkwardness, right? Because you're board members of a school district where there's so many things happening, and I think that, that's, that's the awkwardness of sometime of governance and, and, and leadership, so to speak, where all the things that we're doing now is only, um, because of the policies and the support that the board lands. And so, so I, I say that very sincerely because, quite frank with you, I know places that are unable to do things because they don't have the, the, the governance structure in place. They don't have the, the, what, what I'm seeing now on the screen, um, seven people who are firmly committed to, to ensuring that this district continue to, to be at the top of their game. And those things make a huge difference, huge absolute difference, to know that as superintendent, um, we can, we can get the best ideas and run with them. Folks, that, that's invaluable, you can't put a price tag on that. And because those best ideas are running with them, turn into best products. Um, and, and, and I said to the team all the time, I will put up what we're doing against any organization, any school district across the country for that matter, because we know that people are coming from a very sincere place in terms of their intentions, and, and people also willing to, to, to risk failure in trying to get to success. And there's a difference. Sometimes people settle because they're afraid to risk failure. We don't mind risking failure to get to success because we learned from all those failures. And, and so that's why we run a ton of scenario analysis before we put anything out there to the public, because my assumption is, if I put out a John Q public, I should have already poked enough holes in it that I can anticipate anything that people may see as a fall. And so we're not putting a perfect product out, because there's no such thing as a perfect product. We're putting a product out that, that weighs all the pros and cons, and a product that's most feasible under the circumstances and the conditions that we're dealt with or dealing with at this time. So, so again, I want to share that perspective with the board because that's a lot different than sometime you see where people try to do the public appeasement piece. My job is, I'm going to give the best opportunities for our students, the best chance for them to be successful. That's my job, and I appreciate the support of the board over the last 15 years for that. So, Miss, thank you for, Ms. Stevens, you want me to continue with the last, last piece on here?
Yeah, go ahead, please do.
So, one of the things, and, and I have Mrs. Carmen chime in, and I'm going to shift back to the agenda again. Um, if the board recall, several years back, um, the State Comptroller's Office came out with, um, this piece about school safety plans, and schools across the dish, across the state were, quite frankly, unfairly and grossly ridiculed, um, for not doing something that, quite frankly, people didn't even realize was a part of a regulation. And that was what we're doing tonight. Um, and that's the reason why the, the district safety plan is pulled out separately, it's a policy, by the way, it's pulled out separately from all the policies, so we have a separate agenda item, um, so that the public will know that that document, um, as well as all, by the way, the board, um, protocol for policies are the same. We put 30 minutes, 30 minutes, 30 days, um, between, uh, first reading and second reading so that the public always have an opportunity to go back and review it and share questions in those comments. And so, so however, to, to, to punctuate the point, using Mrs. Stevenson's term, um, just recently, to punctuate the point, we pulled out the, 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 the district-wide emergency plan, having it there, so that if anyone wants to look at it, they can look at it. Quite frankly, it's not a lot of significant changes because the template, the state uses the same template from year to year, but we want to make sure to punctuate that point, and the public can look at it, and between now and we come back in August for that second read, and that's when it will be approved. So again, um, I, if there are questions, we could, um, I could address them, or Mrs. Carmen also stands ready to address those questions, but I just wanted to let you know, that's the reason why we, we pulled it out and separated it from the, the other policies that the board would be asked for a first reading tonight. So if there are any questions on that, I'd be certain it happened, and Mrs. Carmen is ready as well to address any questions. And so the last piece related to policy, I just wanted to, to let the board know, and I'm just going to point out here on the agenda, um, the, the public agenda document that you received, um, there are two policies that were not attached to that, but now in this agenda, and you'll get the update, um, shortly from, was policy 5676 and policy 50, and the regulations related to that. I'm just going to pull those two policies out so you can see what I'm talking about, because they weren't in the public agenda, um, it was this oversight, um, on, on our part. And, but those are the policies that deals with all the new data, um, privacy pieces coming out now. The format is, is largely prescribed. So again, I just wanted to, to bring that to the board's attention. We have reviewed this policy, uh, with policy review, so it's not one of those situations that we didn't go with policy review, it just wasn't attached to the public agenda, so I want to make sure that the board knows that the agenda I'm having, have it, that's, that's now, and we will go back and reattach it to the public agenda, um, tomorrow, so the public will have access again, 30 days to look at those policies as well as a part of our first reading sequence. Any questions about that from the board? So, um, um, I don't know if you saw the, Mrs. Stevens, if you want to, if there, you really want to take it from here, see if there are any questions for first reading or not from the board, and Mrs. Carmen again, stand ready to address those things.
Sure. Um, do we have any questions on the first reading? Or any questions for Becky?
Nope.
None here.
Um, Dr. Robinson, do you want me to come back to the liaison assignments overview?
Um, yes, so I'm sorry, Mrs. Stevens, thank you for bringing that. So one of the things that I have here, um, I just, you could comment, I just want to let the board know, it's, it's not a mistake, um, that, that we have the, the, the 1920 version of those assignments, um, it's so that, that board members could see what the assignments were, um, from, from this past year, and, um, traditionally, how the process has worked is, um, the board members reach out to Mrs. Stevenson as board president to say, hey, I want to keep this A, B, C, and D, and at our, one of our next leadership meeting, um, um, Mrs. Stevens will relay that information to me, and we try to clean this document up and turn it into the 2020 version. So it wasn't a mistake that I had the older version of that, that was part of the process, so we see what we have right now, and we have turned it over to move forward. So Deanna, if you want to offer any comments?
Yes, thank you. Um, so we've seen this, uh, time, you know, this is the time of year we have to look at the assignments, and what we did, what, what I would appreciate is, take this, think about it. Uh, our next meeting is August 11th, I'd like to have this. I'd like to actually start kind of getting, getting a framework within the next two weeks, if everybody could start to at least give me, um, their thoughts, and we can email me, call me, text me, doesn't matter, um, let me know. I also want to continue a thought that we started last year, in that we had some committees that other board members, once we had an assignment, that other board members wanted to actually, um, attend. So for instance, if you're not on the, in the policy review committee, maybe you want to go to one or two, just to sit in, um, and, and listen. Uh, so may, I think it's, it's a great way to be able to round out if you're, if you're interested in, in changing committees, that's a good way to do that. I would also, um, suggest that, we did this last year too, that in some of the assignments for PTA and partnership, it's always good to have a backup. Things happen, uh, things come up, and you're, and somebody may not be able to attend. So we did that last year, I think it's a good idea, uh, and just, I, I will put a, a further thought on that, is that you're a backup. So it doesn't mean that, you know, you have to be on the primary email, uh, back and forth, or however you communicate with the, with district, with the administrator of that school, um, but certainly, uh, I think it's a great idea to have backups for this. So let's shoot for, within the next two weeks, think about it, let's start a conversation. It's not in stone, but as we go on, then we can formulate and continue discussion on that.
Deanna?
Yes, Gary.
Uh, I, I, I believe this is a broad enough topic relative to the assignments, so that it isn't, it isn't inappropriate for me to talk about it. Uh, I have been the, the delegate to New York State School Boards Association for years, I've been the legislative liaison for years. Uh, I found that that was a natural, uh, sort of assignment and responsibility when I first, when I first became an immediate past president. Uh, I have consciously worked with Bob Presley so that he would be well-prepared, not that, not that he needs any help from me, but nonetheless, I have consciously worked with him so that he would be prepared to assume those, uh, official capacities. So I would, I would actually like to see, uh, in the reassignment that Bob receives those assignments, and I will certainly be there to back him up, but, uh, I, I just think it's a good transition right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and, uh, that's, again, very, uh, that's wonderful thoughts for Bob, and I'm sure Bob would, if Bob wants to take that on, Bob can let me know that, and, uh, we can go forward.
Uh, I, I feel comfortable taking that on. Thank you, Gary, thanks for your referral.
And Deanna, if I could just make a suggestion too, um, you know, many of us, we like the continuity of serving, you know, on certain committees, and many times, it's nice to serve a couple of years at least on them, because one year you don't seem to get enough of the experience or the breadth of those committees. Uh, but also I think at times, people should also consider the willingness to look at other, especially when it comes to partnership teams and PTAs, looking at other schools they may not have served on in the past, um, because I think it's a great opportunity for us as board members to learn about all of our schools and not just stick with one or two that might be of a comfort level or familiar to them for whatever reason. So again, I just want to keep that in everyone's mind, if you are willing, you know, to change up, you know, if someone else is interested in what you've been serving on, you know, just also express your interest of your flexibility of, you know, maybe switching to another partnership team or PTA or any other committee as well, so, thanks.
All good points. Anybody else? Okay. So let's shoot for two weeks, and at least we'll have a conversation going, and I'll, uh, I'll keep the document, and, uh, I'll mark it up, and, and I can, we can continue to, uh, go back and forth till we flush it out. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so we made it through the first reading. I just want to also note that, Dr. Robinson, you said that students did not need to join, um, our summer, our summer meetings, but Grace Perna did join, uh, so we got her LinkedIn, so she is with us.
Yes, we, we'll keep that in mind to make sure that she gets a link in the future. She's a, she's a different type of student, so we appreciate her, we appreciate her tenacity to be with us in the summertime.
Absolutely, thank you Grace for joining us tonight. So, moving on to consent items. Roll through these. Okay, first is the treasurer's report. Can I have a motion?
Deanna, can we split those up? I've got, I was not at the June 9th one.
I'm at the treasurer's report right now, Todd.
Oh, I'm sorry, my bad.
That's okay. You're trying to slip me up, aren't you, Todd? It's not going to be, it's not going to be that hard to do that tonight. I've got a long list here.
Deanna, a motion.
Okay, thank you Christina, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you Naomi, so first Christina, second Naomi. Uh, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Wonderful. Okay, so we're going to split the meeting minutes up. Thank you Todd for the June 9th, uh, minutes, can I, Todd, were you not there? Did we miss people that night?
I will abstain courteously from June 9th.
Okay. One abstention, um, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you Naomi, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you Augusta. Naomi first, Gusta second. Any comments or questions for June 9th? Having heard none, can I get a motion to pass? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Great, thank you. June 23rd, I think we were all there.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion on this? Okay, I think I saw Todd, I'll take Christina as a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Okay, action items. I'm going to try to remember how I can group these, so please, tell me if I, if I misstep here. So action items, I think I can link A and B together, our approval of annual appointments and approval of annual authorizations. Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
I saw Christina, I heard Todd as a second. Any comments or question on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. I'm going to group C and D together. Authorizations of bank depositories, petty cash funds, authorizations of employee bondings, all financial. Can I get a motion?
I motion.
Naomi first, Todd is second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Any nays? I only got four screens, so Gary, I can't, I can't see everything, so I apologize for that unless I hear you. Okay, moving down to business items. Approval of compensation and fee schedule, number one. Can I get a motion?
I'll show a motion.
Christina first, Augusta second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Bids. Electrical supplies, snack items, breads and rolls, groceries, aye, dairy, beverages, non-food items, government commodities. Can I get a motion on this?
Motion.
Augusta first.
I'll second.
Naomi second. Any comments or questions on that?
Just one quick question. The electrical bid, is that for the capital work planned for High School East, the tech wing?
I want to be clear.
Blowing it up?
Deanna, can you trace down the sound, it sounds like Darth Vader.
Okay, I think, I think we need to go on mute if, if you're not talking, and you just need to be on mute.
I don't believe that's for the capital project, I think it's for the curriculum, the, the house building and whatnot.
Electrical supplies, Woolburg.
This is for a construction program, this supplies for that program.
Okay, so it's actually for the class?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Okay, uh, can I get a motion? Naomi first.
Is this on a change order, Mrs. Stevenson?
Did I miss one?
No, we are number three now.
Oh, did I, all right, sorry.
We haven't.
Did we vote on the bids?
No, we haven't voted on two yet.
Yeah, so let's go back to bids. Can I get a motion? I think I had Naomi first, can I get a second?
I'm second, Bob.
Bob, thank you. Any comments or questions? We had a comment, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any nays? Motion passes. Number three, change orders, Midstate Industries, Riverview Construction. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob first.
I'll second.
Augusta second. Any comments or questions on this one? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. I do believe I can combine number four, five, six, and 13 because they're contracted services.
But for the purpose of minutes, can we just keep it four, five, six, if you don't mind?
No problem, I can do that. Four, five, six, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Christina, can I get a second?
Second for Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Any comments or questions, four, five, and six?
I was curious what the Latham Centers contract was for, that one was, it, it appears to be an outlier compared to the others.
Hi, this is Michelle. Latham Centers is one of our residential schools, and we have a student attending there through the Committee on Special Education.
And so they live there?
Yes, it's a residential place.
Okay, got it, sorry, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Bob first, can I get a second?
Christina, second.
Thank you, Christina. Any comments or further questions? For approval? Motion passes. Okay, so four, five, six, so we're on seven, seven, okay, seven and eight, I can put together food service meal price increase and free and reduced price policy, so we'll do it together, can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Naomi first, can I get a second?
Second.
Second to Augusta, any comments or questions?
Deanna, Christina, I just want to say, you know, I was really pleased to see how minimal the increase was for the meals, especially with the, the way it costs for food, so I just wanted to recognize Katie for her leadership in that aspect, and always keeping an eye on it, and being very competitive, looking out, you know, for, for our food service needs. So again, I was very pleased to see that.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, all in favor? Any nays? Thank you. Motion passes. Number nine, reappraisal of the tax tertiary reserve. Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
I'll motion.
Ops first, I think I heard Naomi second. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Number 10, scholarships and local grant donations, always with gratitude, can I get a motion?
Yes.
I'll motion. I'll second.
Todd's first, Augusta is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Wonderful, motion passes. Okay, and 11 and 12, I will do together, use of district cell phones, use of district credit cards, both financial. Can I get a motion?
I'll move, Bob.
I saw Gary go up first and Bob second. Any comments or questions?
I just had one comment in the analysis part, it had stated that many of the employees have opted out of having a second cellphone. So in that list, is, is that list of those who, only those who have issued cell phones, or is it a much smaller group?
So Naomi, what you're talking about is the title at the end of it?
Yeah, they, they list the titles, and yes.
That's, that's correct. So we only have a small group of people, most people submit the portions of their bill that's work-related. Instead of having people carry two cell phones with them, which some organizations do, it's one that's more cost-effective, one that's more efficient.
Okay, so it's only those who are authorized to submit their bills? That, that's really what that list represents, but some on that list actually have phones too. Are the correct assessments?
Yeah, yeah, small number of people actually have phones that's owned by the district.
Okay. Thank you, Naomi. Any further comments or questions? Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, did I already motion?
Yeah.
I did, okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Wonderful, motion passes. And finally, number 13, contracted services, Northeast Petroleum. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Thank you, Naomi, can I have a second?
Yep.
Thank you, Todd. Any comments or questions? Any nays? Motion passes. Oh, can I vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, no nays, motion passes. All right, woo, okay. Mrs., Mrs. Mylott, do you want to do the acceptance of special ed?
Sure, these are the recommendations from the Committees on Preschool and School Aides, Special Education Committees.
Any questions for Mrs. Mylott?
I'll motion. Sorry.
Thank, thank you. First motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Naomi. Any comments or questions, no further, I don't believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Personnel, Mrs. Bush, approval of staffing recommendations?
Good evening, I would like to just recognize three retirements. Cynthia Fafaro is retiring as a teacher aide after 17 years. Terry Gallego is retiring after 20 years as a teacher aide, and Janet Speck is retiring after 32 years as a school monitor.
Wow. Congratulations, wow, with the longevity. Okay, any questions for Mrs. Bush?
Motion.
Okay, can I get a motion? Todd, thank you, can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Mrs. Carmen, can you go through second reading for, reading for us, please?
Yes, thank you. The policies are being presented for second reading, were presented last month for first reading, are there any questions regarding any of those?
No, not this time.
Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Augusta. No further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Becky. We have one other item on the agenda tonight, and it is formal recognition of the sports booster groups. Mr. Coleman, are you on with us?
So, Mrs. Stevens, I have to apologize, let's, let's, let's delay on that until we get that complete list ready for you. Part of what we're delaying on, quite frankly with you, is to see what we open the schools going to look like. So I should have relayed that issue to you before, my apology for that, so we'll, we'll pick that back up in August.
No worries. Okay, so do we have any further comments from the public? I do not see any emails.
Deanna, just a comment from me, looking at the upcoming meetings, I will not be here on the 25th, I'll be in vacation for that retreat, just to note that. And on a nicer note, nice job on your first meeting.
Nice job on the what? I didn't hear you.
On your first meeting as president.
Oh, thank you, Todd.
Virtual hug.
Thank you, friend. Okay, so I see no further comments. Mrs. Defisiani, do we have any emails out there? I do not see any.
Nope, there's nothing there.
Thank you. Okay, so let's move to an adjournment, can I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.